I cough on you guys, I'll try not to cough on you guys, but I've been online with Alex for a week, so it shouldn't be loaded with any sort of sicknesses.
No worries.
I'm trying out the antibiotics, so.
All right, I've got five thirty, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and shut up the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, next we will move on to item number three, consideration and approval of the agenda. So motion by Dan, do I hear a second? Oh, second. Second by Kyle, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. All right, next up is number four on the update or on the agenda, sheriff's update, I believe we have a deputy here this evening as well.
Hello, hello. I apologize for not being here last month, I had something going on at the time. Over the last month or so, we increased our patrols on the 10th Street area and record in response to complaints against speeding. We've increased our patrols there, there as well as the Sixth Avenue Street area right there by the park. We have noticed there's an increase in traffic in those areas, so we've increased our patrols as well. We've also increased our patrols on some of the other side streets, Second Street, Southeast, Fifth Street, Third Avenue, Second Avenue. Kind of some of those other more majorly traveled city roadways. We have had reports of loud exhaust and we have conducted traffic stops. In regards to those, we are enforcing loud exhaust going through town. We have had reports of exhaust on First Avenue Southeast and in regards, extra patrol has been done there as well. We've also had other reports of vehicles speeding in and out of Hilltop Pride View and kind of that Eighth Street Southwest area and extra patrol has been put over there as well. We have noticed there's an increase in some juveniles who are really pushing their limits with the curfew time. We've stopped out with them whenever we see them, like I said, they're not quite violating curfew yet, but it's within like a five minute window, so we've been kicking them on, taking them on home and kind of telling them that citations could be issued. Also been doing some enforcement with e-bikes and stuff, more of an educational thing. I have noticed that the amount of e-bikes around town have gone down from the days that I've worked, I've been kind of in and out of work the last month or so. But from what I can tell, some of the traffic with e-bikes has gone down lately, I think as we start getting into the colder months, that will definitely slow down as well. Like I said, I kind of been in how it works, I'm not super prepared, which I apologize, but anything from you guys, any complaints, concerns?
You have a question? When you stop them for their loud cars or whatever, is that just under traffic stop with that?
Yeah, yeah, that falls under that.
I had actually written down, just to elaborate on what you said, I'd written down juvenile trouble with a question mark. Is there anything that, is this same group of juveniles, is this kind of spread out of town?
We've noticed it's a, we've noticed it's kind of the same group of juveniles and are aware of where they reside and kind of where they hang out and will see kind of how them about, especially curfew with them kind of being out a little bit later, especially when it starts getting dark and stuff. So we have been kind of cracking down on that.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, we will move on to public forum, this is an opportunity for citizens to present items to council that are not on the agenda. Each presentation is limited to three minutes with a maximum of fifteen minutes set aside. If your item needs follow-up, Earl will arrange time for that. If you'd like to step forward for public forum, please make your way to the podium, state your name and address and council will hear your concerns.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity for just a few minutes here before we start, before you start. My name's Andy Schrader, I'm the co-owner and chief building official for Rum River Consultants and been your building official since April twenty eighteen. That time went fast, I'm here tonight with Roxanne and Kerry from our office, we've had a number of conversations over the last several days since learning of the agenda items that are in front of you tonight related to building code administration and contract services. As we talked more about that, it became very evident that the building code administration and the business of building code administration is very much like the buildings themselves. They're very intricate and they're also act like systems where any one component can have an effect on other components as well. And as we met this morning with Tabitha and Marcy, it became very evident to us that we have some areas to improve upon. And one of them, thank you very much Marcy for that, is pointed out that it seems that we are losing the personal touch. As our company has grown significantly over the number of years, we've added on a specialized staff and, you know, plumbing plan review, delegated building projects and things of that nature. We wanted to make sure we're not losing that personal touch and that's why we're here tonight, just to make sure that we remain available and that we can talk about these things. We did identify some pain points this morning in some areas that we can improve that communication again and we, we honed in on those things, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. That we heard that loud and clear, Marcy mentioned on more than one occasion, how it seems like we were losing that personal touch because we were getting so big. We wanted to make sure that we addressed that, so that's why I'm here this evening, Kerry and Roxanne and I are here as well and we can speak more on that subject when it becomes in front of you. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, we are still in public forum, if any other members of public would like to step forward to public forum, please make your way to the podium. I will ask again, if anybody would like to step forward to public forum, please make your way to the podium. I will ask for a third and final time, if anybody would like to step forward for public forum. Hearing none, we all move on to item number six point one, this is a public hearing for dog ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So recently, I was dealing with a dangerous dog situation and I came across a situation where our ordinance had a conflict with state statute. And that the conflict exists where in the dangerous dog ordinance, it talks about the owner giving, getting five days to apply for hearing to have with the city to to confirm if whether or not the dog is dangerous or not, to appeal that hearing. Where state statute has changed and now they allow fourteen days. Our ordinance also states that we, where a conflict exists, we we result, we go back to the state statute for guidance, so changing this ordinance will eliminate this conflict. So I met with the ordinance committee last month and it passed unanimously and now we're here for a public hearing.
Thank you. Let's go ahead at this point in time and open up the public hearing, if any members of the public would like to step forward, this is a public hearing, we are here to hear your opinions. I will ask again, this is a public hearing, if any members of the public would like to step forward for the public hearing regarding the dog ordinance, please step forward. And I will ask for a third and final time, if any members of the public would like to step forward for the dog ordinance public hearing. Hearing none at this point in time, we will close the public hearing. Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we will move on to another public hearing, this is twenty twenty-five delinquent water and sewer accounts and accounts receivable assessments.
Or you might pick on this? The assessment? This is an annual assessment where the accounts are reviewed, whether it's accounts receivable or the utility billing and a list is gathered to those accounts that are past due and this is to allow those people, otherwise it will be
All right, thank you, Marcy. All right, at this point in time, we will open the public hearing for delinquent water and sewer accounts. If you would like to step forward to the podium and speak on behalf of this item, please make your way up to the podium and state your concerns. All right, I will ask again, if any members of the public would like to step forward and have your concerns heard for the delinquent water sewer accounts. And I will ask for a third and final time, if any members of the public would like to step forward to speak on this. Hearing none at this point in time, we will close the public hearing and move on to yet another public hearing, item number six point three. MIF application and resolution to execute grants.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Leslie Satter, your economic development coordinator and what we have in front of you is a collaboration between Brookham, Aboutly USA, a company in your technology park and the city to make an application to the Department of Employment and Economic Development for a Minnesota investment funding for their expansion project. They are looking at bringing in about a five million dollar investment in equipment which will add initial twelve jobs to their operations and the state has determined they're eligible for these funds. What they will be is a grant to the city, which will be loaned to Brookham over a course of ten years at two percent interest rate. And a requirement of this grant application is that we hold a post a public hearing to get public comment because it is a public-private partnership and it is state funds that would be flowing into the project, so. Later on your agenda is the request for the resolution to be passed so that the grant application can be submitted.
Leslie, at this point in time, I will open up the public hearing for the MIF application. If anybody, members of the public would like to step forward and speak on behalf of this MIF application, please make your way to the podium. I will ask again, if any members of the public would like to step forward for the public hearing regarding the MIF application, please make your way to the podium. And I will ask for a third and final time, if any members of the public would like to step forward for the public hearing on this MIF application. None at this point in time, we will close the public hearing and move on to item number seven point one on our agenda. This is an agenda request from Pine City Youth Hockey this week.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, I'm Chrissy Deloda, I'm the Pine City Hockey president. I personally thank you guys for the partnership that we have had up at Hilltop since two thousand nineteen. The reason we're here tonight is we were, had heard that there's a possibility that we could move some of the funding that the city and Pine City Hockey has worked together in our memorandum of understanding. I do have some information in regards to just what we have utilized that money for up at the parks. We've actually done a lot of investments and improvements with that money that we've received over the last five to six years. And I do have those reports for you guys. But it's just an overview of, like I said, everything that we've put into, you know, whether propane for the Zamboni, the parts and race maintenance, concrete work that we've done up there, we've invested in some used or use like new boards and lights, so just a lot of improvement, so. Between all of our volunteer staff, or not staff, but all the volunteers that we have, they spend a lot of time and late night hours just flooding and maintaining the ramps, not just for youth hockey, but for the kids, kids and adults, families in the community, so. We're just hoping that this is considered, you know, a great investment, the amount of what we can do with our donated time and labor, you know, between all of our association members, I mean, we do it on pennies on the dollar, but the city would have to pay an employee to do that, so we're just hoping going forward that the twelve thousand dollars that we receive each year is something that continues to be an ongoing thing because it really is a great asset and we put a lot of time and dedication, we're really proud of the park up there and that's why we continue to do what we do up there. If anyone else wants to speak.
Thank you. Would you open to questions from council, if there are any members of council who have any questions?
I don't. Looks great up there.
Okay. Thanks, we got a lot of, we're really fortunate to have a lot of skilled men and women that donate a lot of their time and knowledge to, I mean, the maintenance and that everyone does, so we're really fortunate with what we have as far as our members.
I think we get a winter worthy of skating in the ice and it lasts more than a week.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, moving right along here, consent items, let's make a motion to approve or is there any other discussion?
Someone, I have two quick questions on the check register. One is, there's a check for Andrew Johnson for IT services, I'm guessing that this is a somebody that's performing IT for us now. And then the other question I have just have to get to my page here was for on page sixty-one, there's a check to LJJ wastewater maintenance for televised sewer lines along Eighth Street. And I'm wondering, do we have our own camera through that kind of stuff or is that something we could get on a budget to try to purchase so that we could do that ourselves? Or? Well, depending on what we go after, but I mean, we could get something where we could go at least two hundred and fifty foot on a trolley for a budgeted expense for what we have to pay every, in my opinion, every, we're spending twenty-one hundred dollars.
That was several different times that they were out here. Got a bunch of ropes on some sewer line that needed to make sure we got them.
Oh, okay, I don't, again, I just see one check for one thing on Eighth Street, like, we should, we should buy our own camera.
It wasn't just one day, it was several days.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I had.
Are you, the motion? Motion from Gina to approve the consent items, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Second from Dan, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, next we will move on to old business, item number nine point one, request for council action, MIF resolution to execute grants.
Hello again, back with the request, did council have any questions from my previous explanation of the request?
I had one question, you said it was laid out over ten years, what happens in that time if the company's ever purchased or dissolved or goes out of business, what happens with the grant at that point?
Well, it's a loan, so they would have to pay it. Just like any other debt that they would carry, if they sold the business, they'd have to pay off their debts before transferring the sale.
All right, any other questions from?
The only question I have was the request for council action, isn't signed by the finance director, does that matter?
I think because there was not. She likes to sign it if there's going to be an impact and then she would explain where it would come from on our.
Perfect, all right, would someone like to make a motion to approve the resolution or otherwise?
I'll make the motion of pre-resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-three.
Got a motion from Kyle, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we'll see what the rule call vote. Dan?
Gina? Kyle? And I will also vote yes, that motion carries.
All right, next up, we are, thank you, Leslie, next up, we are on item number nine point two, ladder truck resolution.
Little update, I don't have this back from the attorney. We have our city attorney involved with this as well as our insurance attorney. They are working with the finance attorney. They, the attorney made some requests, some were answered, there's a couple issues that are not negotiable according to the city. We are not able to fulfill those obligations on this agreement, so until that's worked out, we don't have an agreement that's applicable for the attorney to bring forward.
So I, I guess I'm a little bit confused because we were told that we had execute this by the end of October. It is now November, all this stuff came up after October, would have been kind of nice to know about this a while back.
Well, yeah, you're hitting it as I get it because we were given this lease agreement so late, we got it late one afternoon and they wanted it returned back approved with the financing office from city attorney approval and they gave us half a day.
And what's the items that are non-negotiable by the city?
Mostly with insurance, the requirements, we can't even fill them, we had a couple that were regarding finance. We had to explain when we met with them, why we can't meet those obligations, I believe they've accepted that. There's this couple items regarding our insurance.
And I guess I'm still confused because there's no information on what those items are, nothing has been provided to the council, it just all you keep saying is insurance and we're now in November.
I can ask the city attorney for specifically which items, and so they're in regards to insurance. But I can ask for specifically what items they're going back and forth with.
Did you ask um league and Minnesota cities as well?
But that's our insurance carrier, so that's who's been a part of this as well, and they've actually made comments, you know, financing or anything like this.
The league?
Yeah, the league and our city attorney. So that's why they're so hesitant to budge. But I'll definitely give you the details because the rest of this, by the end of this. But. Now part of the city right now.
I think that information should have been brought to the attention of the council right away since the council did recommend, or did vote on executing this plan, which was by the end of October. Now we're just dragging out, so it seems like we're just keeping this can down the road and it keeps getting delayed.
I don't think our legal counsel is kicking a can. I think it's looking out for the city's best interest.
They could have started in September, but it seems like they wouldn't.
We did not get in the form until the day before they were supposed to. Oh, I can get to the exact dates. We were very late in getting this agreement, so there's been no delay on our part.
I do remember that we talked about it in August. We did delay it in the start of September.
We did not have an agreement done.
We started talking about it. We were gonna look at having an agreement and then it got delayed.
The financing agency is the one, this is financing agreement. It's already been like the order has been placed. Against temporarily because the financing paperwork is what just got to us while the chief was away on um and. We, they're just reviewing, we were doing that. It's a financing agreement.
So we committed, but we didn't commit.
You can, council chose to move forward with this.
I take it as we, we bought the vehicle, but we haven't signed the loan paper. We haven't filled out the loan paper or we're looking through the loan paper.
Yeah, and council agreed to move forward, but we still needed to have a credit check, so that's been done. We needed to place the order, that's been done. The financing agreement is this last part that's just. Our attorney and our insurance are trying to get it in line, so we can't default on something that we can't uphold to.
I'd like to see the documentation that, that is the holdup. That should have been communicated to the council.
I have been communicating this from the beginning.
I haven't seen any ho- holdups or anything from the, the insurance company or the, the attorney. It'd be nice to be kept up to date on things.
You are being kept up to date.
There has been none. And the check has been written.
No, there's been no transfer of bond. Until the financing is done. Orders in place.
But I thought in the check register, there was a check for two hundred.
It has not been released to them yet.
Okay.
Yep, we can't do that without having that approved.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns, right on number nine point two? Here, none. We will move on to item number uh nine point three, request for council action proposals for IT services.
Um, the city went out for IT proposals and we received. Fifteen, thirteen, so. Before you were the, I think we got those to you, so you could review them and repeat for your direction on how to move forward.
Well, I think, uh, my opinion. We have a budget to start with, that's budgeted for next year. Um, I will be quite honest that I did not make it through all thirteen RFPs. Because it's like four hundred pages and I think I threw six of them. Um, I, I feel this is a very important decision. Uh, I think it's, it plays with the budget too, because if we have to go up, can we find from other places to put? But I would like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting. Um, just to have a better opportunity to get through all of the information to make the best informed decision. Who is currently doing our IT services?
Andrew Johnson. Giving our laptops or desktops updated for the two thousand eleven version.
Is that the only IT services that we have? Is there other IT services? Yeah.
And um default to your opinion as well.
And I also have not made it through all of the. RFPs, I'll be completely honest with that. Um, I think we need to, I, I agree with Dan. I think this needs to be something that is carefully looked at and I think we, we can't afford to make the wrong decision here. Um, one data breach, one thing could. Tie up our staff for months and months and months if something were to happen, so. Um, I agree with Dan, I think we need to, I guess at the end of the day, I'm, I'm very much okay tabling for now.
So is that a second?
Uh, I also think it would be advantageous for us to maybe cut, if we can cut the list down to. Three, four, five, and maybe do some interviews and get some face-to-face time and see um how things go from there. But with that being said, I will second Dan's uh motion to table.
And I was to table until the next meeting?
Table next, till the next.
Yeah.
Till our next meeting. Perfect. All right, is uh there any further discussion? That. Here, none. All those in favor of tabling item number nine point three, please, if I'm ever saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, we are at nine point four, twenty twenty-six budget update.
We're currently at the four point. Four one. Um, by Friday, I hope to have you. Be scheduled, so we could look at ways to increase revenue. That's where we're at.
Is the ten percent increase for wages for city staff still in there?
And that, and that's a huge place to cut.
And the, the problem I have with that is that we're getting kind of late in the year for any kind of uh. Staff review or anything or setting goals. I really don't want to set goals in January. I'd like to set goals this year.
No, it'll be us.
Oh, we're, we're kind of running out of time, so.
Perfect. All right, any other questions, comments, concerns, right on number nine point four? Here, none. We're going to move on to new business, uh starting out, item number ten point one, request for council action, SCDP application for the.
Good evening, um. Back with a second request on behalf of your Pine City Housing Redevelopment Authority. Um. As you're well aware, that property, Hillside Courts, has some foundation issues. And so um at the end of September, the HRA received notice that they did not get their publicly owned housing program grant. And this is one of the few opportunities left that could assist in making that repair. So what the Small Cities Development Program is, is a program funded through the Department of Employment and Economic Development. Um, with community development block grant funds they get from the federal government. It's a competitive application process, um where communities like Pine City. Um, and our surrounding neighbors can apply for these funds to do a variety of types of activities. That typically include commercial building rehab, which is what you guys have done in years past, as well as owner occupied housing rehab. This application would be for multifamily rental, it'd be specifically for a property. Um, and it has some limitations. And so in front of you is a request to be basically um the fiscal sponsor and the grant recipient of these funds. Because um deed has determined that they don't recognize a, a housing redevelopment authority as a local unit of government, even though it's in state statute that they are. Um, so we are required to request the city council and the city itself to funnel these funds through. If it were awarded to the HRA for these repairs. The program has some limitations. Um, they're limited at requesting twelve thousand five hundred dollars per unit. Um, so the most that they could request for this project is four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, forty-eight, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, which they should match and they will match with their capital funds that they do currently have. Um, a portion of that grant could be used for administration purposes because these grants have a lot of requirements. Um, one in particular that gets a little bit burdensome is enforcing um the federal wage rates, the Davis Bacon Act. Um, so the contractor that bids the project would have to use federal wage rates um for Pine County for the work that is done, which usually increases the cost a little bit. What's burdensome is administrations, you have to verify every weekly payroll to make sure that they're paying those folks the right wages. Before you can release the grant funds to the contractor to be paid, so it's a little bit paperwork heavy. Um, but that's why it is fifteen percent admin fee. Those dollars could be um used by both city staff as they help prepare the disbursement request um forms to get the funds from deed. Um, I could charge my time there as I help with the administration as well as SMR management to disperse the funds. So it would be kind of a collaborative effort to get these funds out the door appropriately, um and really get this foundation project fixed. The grant applications or this preliminary proposal is due right before Thanksgiving this month. Um, so we're looking for your guys', we're looking for a motion to, to allow us to do this on behalf of the city. Um, and then if we're selected through this preliminary process, a full application, which would require the resolution and the public hearing. And that kind of stuff would happen at a later date if they think we're a competitive project. Um, so that's kind of what the ask is, is to be a collaborative partner for this project and help them get the funds to fix the foundation.
So in a couple meetings ago, we voted to either separate with HRA at the end of twenty twenty-six or they had to pay it back. So how would this work long term if we got this funding available and they were no longer part of the city or the Pine City HRA?
Um, I guess you kind of probably want to involve the city attorney on how you can dissolve the HRA without having a plan for the property to be owned and managed. By um a housing redevelopment authority. Because there are some legal ramifications in dissolving your, so the HRA was created by resolution by the city council back in nineteen sixty-six. Um, cities can dissolve their HRAs, but if there's a property that is being managed by that HRA, then it needs to transfer to another entity. That it can do that kind of work, but HUD has some clauses in there where if you accept operating in capital funds. That you have to maintain that ownership and those subsidies and that project. Um, and before you can transfer it to another entity, you'd have to fix all of the capital needs, which is the foundation. So. The legal ramifications of dissolving it before that can happen, I'm not sure exactly how that would work. But it, it'd be in the best interest of the community to keep it as it is. So you can get the foundation fixed so that it could transfer to another entity in the future, if that is the wishes of the council.
Um, and quick, did, did you say that the Small Cities Development Program was the one we used to rehab businesses and houses?
Yes.
And that was a smashing success, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so now it's, we have a, a decision to make if it's a good fit for multifamily housing.
For the HRA properties, technically, yes.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that I tracked that, okay? I think that.
Did I answer your question enough, too?
It kind of seems like you're just adding another layer to make it more difficult to separate.
I'm not adding a layer. In nineteen sixty-six, when this was adopted as a HRA and a public housing authority. And the funds were accepted to main, you know, to operate and maintain an affordable housing project. That's the layers of complexity that were there. I didn't add them.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you how it works.
I'm just super confused because we were gonna try and fix this in February and we were told flat out that it's an HRA project and not a city project, so.
It still is. So the city would be the applicant for these grant funds. The city would grant the funds out to the HRA. Similarly to how the city granted out funds to commercial building owners and homeowners to fix them up. So it becomes a grant, there's an agreement that, you know, you're going to do the project within the guidelines of the grant, just like our commercial property owners and homeowners. Agreed to, and then after a set amount of time, it is forgiven. But it's, it's almost an identical project, it's just a different focus, rather than commercial and homes owned and occupied by the owners. Or by people, um it's a multifamily residential project and it's to help maintain that affordability. And make sure it's a healthy safe place for people to continue to live in. And should you want to part with the HRA or dissolve it, it gives it that opportunity to fix this large capital need. Before it can be transferred, which is a HUD requirement. Not my requirement, HUD's requirement.
Did I understand you right, but this is a hidden wage job then if these funds are used?
Yeah.
That's awesome. And just because I'm learning grants still, it says that the grant is dispersed on a reimbursement basis.
Yep.
Does that mean that the city has to come up with the money first and then they reimburse us and reimburse the project?
So that is how, that is exactly how it works. You have to be able to float the cash through before you get reimbursed. Um. That is exactly how the Small Cities Development Program was ran before. Um, it was funneled through the EDA's funds. So the EDA would take that hit until it could be reimbursed. And then at the end of the project, you should have a zero balance unless somebody has paid off their grant for selling it or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, members of council, any other questions?
Explain the billion of staff time a little bit better, because you said that you could bill your staff time to it. And is that going to be improved by city staff as the, how much time are you allocating to that project? Is it, you're working on the project and then we just pay the expenditure, or how does that work?
I, I, we would probably work it into our agreement that we have, is that I would bill up my time and I would track it like I do with the EDA and HRA hours. It would be called out as a line item. You know, if three hours are spent processing paperwork for this grant, it would be called out, Small Cities for the HRA. And I think that's working. With the invoicing and the tracking.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns from council? Would someone like to entertain a motion for the uh SCDP application?
So.
Motion from Dan, do I hear a second?
A second.
Uh, any further discussion? Here, none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Leslie. All right, excuse me. Next up, item number ten point two, request for council action dog ordinance amendment.
Hello again.
Hello.
So yeah, I'm back here again asking for uh the ordinance amendment for nine point zero zero point zero three zero. Section S, part three, and we just want to change our current language of the five days to match the state statute to fourteen days.
So I do have a question. What happens in that extended period of time if there's another attack by that dog? Does it restart the process? Does it stay on track? How does that work? The city liable?
Um, I believe if another attack happens that under statute that the dog can be seized at that point.
Any other questions from council?
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash sixteen.
All right, I've got.
Right here, urging. That's the right one.
Yep. Twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. All right, um, motion from Gina. We're here a sec.
I'll second.
Second from Kyle. Any further discussion?
Uh, I've received a lot of um feedback. I've had five or six different people reach out to me about this ordinance in and of itself. And I know it's not my motion, but I would strongly like to, to, for us to consider sending the entirety of this ordinance. Back to ordinance to clean up the language, if you will. Um, there are quite a few striking examples in here that are uh rather scary if you're an animal owner. Um, one of them being like, it calls out by he, not, not particularly. It's the uh. Should be more general neutral, if you will. And then, under section I. Um, specifically, the revocation piece. Um, it says, "A city may revoke any license issued under this section if the person holding the license refuses to fit. Refuses or fails to comply with the section, any regulations promulgated by the city pursuant to the section. Or any state or local law governing cruelty to animals or the keeping of animals." The scary part is, "Any person whose licenses revoked shall, within ten days thereafter, humanely dispose of all dogs being owned, kept, or harbored by such person. And no part of the license fee shall be refunded." That's, that's scary to a lot of people because maybe they have more than one animal, maybe they have problems with one, but now they have to get rid of. But that, that would be the, that would be my ask, is that the entirety of the ordinance goes back to ordinance. Um, to bring the language.
Sure.
Uh, to uh.
And I was dealing with an issue on section S, um, under dangerous dogs, and that's where we found that discrepancy, so. Um, just can go back to ordinance and we can do a deeper dive into the entirety.
Is it, is it a discrepancy when it's more stringent? Oh, can, we can choose to be more stringent, we just can't choose.
Well, except for in the ordinance where it's highlighted there, it says that where a conflict exists between our ordinance and statute, that it reverts back to statute. We follow state statute. So in this thing. So in this instance, that section S, um, we have to follow what the statute says. So we had to, in that situation, I did allow this uh individual additional time um to request the hearing.
Right, do we need to wrap that into the motion or would you like to amend your motion or?
I'm fine with it as it is, but if if um I can withdraw my motion and Dan can make a motion to do whatever he said he was trying to.
Yeah, I would make a motion to um approve ordinance twenty twenty five dash sixteen.
Okay.
Uh, with the um request that the entirety of the ordinance goes back to ordinance for language and update. I'll second.
Second by Kyle. Alright, any further discussion at this point? Hearing none, this is important, so we will proceed with a roll call vote. Uh, Kyle, I'll start with you this time.
Yes.
Gina?
No.
Hey, uh, Dan?
Aye.
And I will also vote yes. Motion carries.
I'll give.
Right, thank you. Next, we move on to item number ten point three, resolution twenty twenty five dash forty two. Adopting assessments for utility bills and accounts receivables.
Does the resolution require for staff to proceed with um bringing this over to county?
I'll make motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash forty two as presented.
Great, I've got a motion from Gina, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
A second from Dan, any further discussion?
I I am curious if we have individuals outside of city limits that use water and don't pay their bill. What controls do we have in place to make sure that they're not getting water in the future? I mean.
Yes, well, these sewer services. Um, actually, that is sewer meeting tonight, so um they do have their own collections system that we do. They had their approval of the assessment as well, which also goes, they follow the same steps we do in getting into the. So we get paid, then they assess, um.
No, no, I get that. But what if we have somebody that's outside of the county to be ass that can assess taxes too? Outside of limits, whether from Wisconsin or something. Like bulk water purchase type situation?
Yeah.
Okay, those go to collections.
I know, but if we can't collect from them, what controls are we are we just not letting them get water in the future? Are we asking for money upfront if they come back to us or how does that work?
Oh, so like bulk water is all I can think of, right?
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the control is in place.
Alright, I've got a motion from Gina and a second from Dan approving twenty twenty five dash forty two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, this is a resolution, so obviously with a roll call vote. Dan?
Aye.
Gina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, that motion here. Alright, next up is item number ten point four, request for council action Pine City Building Inspection Services.
There's been talk, um, and so Tabitha and I reached out and did some discussions with regarding how could we move forward if wanted to have another building official um attached to buying uh an option with uh the new schedule, uh building permits, fees, and then the agreement on this.
So I guess I'm I'm a little bit confused because at one point we did have Rum River to kind of go over how to streamline it about five years back, I believe, maybe with some contractors. I haven't heard anything about it since, about problems. So now we have this message saying that we're having problems and all of a sudden, boom, we have somebody that can take over this position. So this kind of seems like it was brought up last minute or just somebody's pushing something here. I don't I don't really understand.
I can say, I'll start off, I guess I can say that um uh unfortunately, I would say that the number one complaint I have received from residents um and developers and business owners is how difficult it has been to work with Rum River. By far and away, that's the most biggest complaint that I have received from the gamut of people in Pine City. Um. I think I I when I read this, I think it's nice to see someone more vocal. Um, I know I've heard complaints of multiple times and that it just Rum River's slowing progress down because they can't get someone to inspect the three things that need to be inspected on the same day. They're multiple days, multiple weeks apart. So they're holding up processes, they're holding up. I've I've had conversations with developers that say they refuse to do business in Pine City because Rum River is our building inspector. But they do business in more, they do business in other, or they they do business in other areas of the community. Um, so I found that concerning. Um, I think it's, we've seen some issues, I I don't want to say issues, we've had seen both sides of the story from a fairly recent um developments that just could never get off the ground. Um, so I I guess I I have concerns. I think Marcie and I have had this conversation. Um.
Fiscally, what does that mean for the city?
Um, if you look at the comparison of the contracts, um, there's real no difference in the same eighty twenty, eighty percent, twenty percent.
There's, do you think, do you think a change is going to be um more fiscally responsible or no difference?
I don't think there's a difference.
Okay, alright, thank you.
That's that's gonna be a substantial cost increase if we switch to what we're suggesting to switch to.
I I guess my other concern is if if there has been this discussion of concerns, how come the council hasn't brought it up to have that discussion with Rum River, Council of Rum River since then? It's just we waited until now to propose a catastrophic change?
No, that's not how it happened. I mean, since I've been here, different council members have shared their concern. Um, residents, builders have shared my concerns, their concern. Part of my job description is to oversee contract services, so it was my responsibility to see what else was available. It wasn't, it was input from council, but it doesn't need to be council directed. It's council approval, but it's not council directed.
Yes, Mayor, also if I might be recognized, thank you for the opportunity. Um, as you can well imagine, we address comments and concerns on a regular basis. And um we do that happily because we like to take the time to explain the why behind the what. And without having specifics about concerns, we're unable to address them. And it's really important because there's so many different moving parts. Like I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of different moving parts to building code administration, responsibilities to the state, responsibilities to the uh the um the administration staff, as well as our ultimate customer, the homeowner. Not only that homeowner, but the next one and the one even after that. So really, I implore you to let us know where these concerns come from so we can address them. Because it's not fair to the residents that have questions and concerns if they're not being followed up with. Carrie and myself, again, we represent a large number of people. And we pride ourselves, quite frankly, on the ability to respond to those quick questions and concerns. But without specifics, we can't address them and we can't help the ultimate customer there.
I'd like to quickly correct that. Um, I have sent emails out regarding concerns, especially regarding the pine tech. Um, and that was a pretty significant issue and I had was not pleased by the response.
Aye.
So please don't say that you have not been notified in any way before, because that's not a true statement.
Thank you for that. Um, I was, I we did address that this morning at our conversation I'm talking about. Because when I look at this comment or this report, it it appears like there's a whole plethora of conversations and and issues that we are not aware of. So I am aware of that one and we're working through that and I appreciate that, Marcie. But then the other thing I I really need to point out is there are huge significant differences between the proposal that's in front of you and the ones that we provide. We have the delegation agreements for building, uh, public buildings as well as plumbing and fire. We're here to support the fire department as well. So there are huge differences between those proposals, uh, the fees as well. We did take the liberty of reviewing that contract. And there are, it's a hundred percent plan review in some areas where we're at eighty percent. So I guess my main message to everybody tonight is let's hit pause for a minute and timeout to give us the time and the attention that it deserves. Because there's a lot of nuances in here that people may not be aware of. Carrie and I breathe this and Roxanne as well, we breathe this stuff every day. And this is such an important topic. I believe we need to have a further discussion and not necessarily make a rash decision. Because we just became aware of this agenda item on Monday. And again, I apologize for losing that touch and not being as personally involved as I want to be, but I am here now. And I want to make sure that I'm I'm here to hear the council's concerns is in addition to the ones that we're already aware of.
Members of the council, is there questions, comments, concerns? Would someone like to?
Um, I have a concern with the the D P R builders' scope of services because if and this is just my opinion based on my experience in the industry, if we go with what's presented, it is gonna create significant fine defects. Because the amount of time it's gonna take to get some of these things set and done is gonna be much longer than what we have currently. And this person isn't a certified inspector to begin with, so we have certain limitations with that. And I don't see anything in here with the ability to do plumbing review or electrical review or fire review or fire suppression inspection. So those will be all separate inspections that we have to arrange, all separate plan reviews that we have to arrange, which are only gonna create huge amounts of time. Now, I don't disagree that if there is the issues that maybe we should be looking at it, but um I don't feel that this this was a surprise to me when the agenda came out and I don't, I don't, I didn't like that.
Do do members of the council feel like we could table this topic? Continue our conversations and perhaps um understand maybe there was even a way in the future that you and D P R builders could work together or something or to see if um, you know, we could still contract part of your services and part of their services or or at least have the discussion. It does sound like it's um, you know, something that's important, but you know, maybe just table this until we get more information.
Get some more information or dive in a little deeper. It works out by law. Well, I think for me, again, just my opinion, but if we're gonna be a good contract partner, we have to give our contracted services what is wrong and a chance to cure. And I don't, I I know that we've sent some emails, there may have been, but if if there is this long, long list and things that I've heard the same things that you have, but some of the things that I'm hearing are from people that just don't like anybody anywhere near what anything that they're doing.
Right.
And or they don't want to have to spend the money because they don't think they should have to spend seventy five dollars on a permit to put a hot water heater. Well, guess what? Those things matter. Somebody, we have lots of people that moved into our community. I am one of, I bought a house from somebody that was a flipper that cost me sixty five thousand dollars that I had to do in repairs because it was never inspected or permitted properly. So there's, there's a lot more to this than just, in my opinion, getting one R F P from one person and trying to make a big contracted service difference. We kept talking about this personal term and I guess my personal perspective is that the building inspector or Rum River, whoever's doing it, is not supposed to be well liked. They're supposed to be a neutral party. It's not buddy buddy with everybody else in the community, because it allows you to be completely um neutral across the board. And that's what I worry about is if you go with local and you go with a friend, how easy is it to say, well, we're gonna do stuff here and we're not gonna do stuff somewhere else? And Rum River has a lot to lose if they go down that avenue with how big they are. I'd rather sit down and have a conversation about how to improve it, make a little more streamlined and go from there. And then see if we can address the problem and if we can't, we go in a different direction.
If I might, one more thing, thank you, Mayor and Council, is that, you know, the one issue that was addressed was with the coordination with the fire department. Uh, we support a number of fire departments around the state and through baseline, our technology, our our software, we're able to make that connection. So when inspections are registered, that that automatically, that connection is automatically made with the jurisdictions representative on the fire department. Now, that came out of a direct result from our experiences here. So as painful as that experience was, it was kind of a deeper bruise. But from that bruise, we're able to now utilize the technology with baseline again to make sure that that connection is is more automated. So we're all learning together. You know, this isn't about perfections, about process and progress. That's where we're coming from.
In our conversation um this morning, I brought up a particular factor that if council decided to move forward, my request was that that building official official would not be involved with Pine City. And they, he agreed that that was, it's it's just, um, we were lied to and it was a significant lie. And I think that he was misled um to believe something different and that's why he defended that person. However, I just need assurance that that person will not be a part of our city.
We had lengthy discussions about that and I can respect that, Marcie.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Peterson.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Alright, to not take up a whole ton more time on this this evening and I don't I don't foresee us kind of coming to a conclusion at this point in time. Could we, what would council like to do? Should we table it and get some more information from all parties? Do you want to meet with?
I feel like like the can of worms has been opened. We should at least table it and and continue our research and and knowledge about um, moving forward with everything we need to know and make sure about it.
I I would like to table it, but I'd like to bring it back. It sounds like we need to have a discussion between council, staff and Rum River on what those problems are, because obviously I don't know all of them, so I'd like to table it until January, revisit it in January. I'll then add a corrective action plan maybe to that, so we can come up with specific examples.
Let's learn at first and then maybe go to that step next, if there is, you know.
Well, I would.
My motion is to table it and get more information. We can, I can stay till January. That would be my motion.
Um, Mr. Mayor, if I might? Um, I just wanted to make sure, could we be notified when that is tabled? Because I was um the one that had looked at the agenda. Because I, even though I'm not on top of everything I did, I do review your agendas and that's how we discovered on Monday that it was on on tonight's meeting. So if we could just be um notified of when that's gonna be discussed and again, we're open to sit down and have any conversation. Communications, the uh communication to relationships is the like breadth of life, right? So we want to make sure that we don't have that break down yet.
Perfect, yes, and I will make sure Marcie and Tabitha work together and we'll get everybody on the same page.
And that probably be what, the second meeting in January? Because the first meeting is the housekeeping.
Yeah. Alright, uh, who made the motion to table? Gina, did you make the motion to table? Um, would somebody like to second that motion to table until January?
Awesome.
Uh, right, and a second from Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those papers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Alright, next up, item number ten point five, resolution twenty twenty five dash forty six, accepting donations.
This resolution is to acknowledge a donation from the Pine City Lions as well as uh Vausworth Park, the Lions Park. And then the second donation is for um from Essentia for the fire department and their rope rescue water.
Thank you, Marcie. Uh, questions, comments, concerns from council? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Thank you, Pine City Lions, Cleveland. Thank you, Essential Health. I'd make a motion to pass uh resolution twenty twenty five dash forty six.
Alright, I've got a motion from Dan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second. Gina? Any further discussions from council? Alright, hearing none, this is a resolution, so we will proceed with a roll call vote. Kyle?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Dan?
Aye.
And I will also vote yes, that motion carries. Alright, next up, we move on to item number eleven point one, planning community development and engineering business, uh, Rezone Stransky Property.
Evening, Mayor.
Hello.
Hello, everyone.
Um, so the last couple of months, you guys have seen Stransky's is they requested a minor subdivision. Part of that minor subdivision was um, to rezone the property. We held the public hearing last month and we had one member of the public in attendance in support of it. Um, the DNR reviewed it and raised no concerns. They were very pleased with the way the city is working in completing this project. Um, they are in compliance with all of our current ordinances per our zoning amendment ordinance. Um, and we just asked that you would approve the rezoning request with the conditions that were listed.
And it was a neighboring property that came in support?
Yes.
All right, any questions, comments, concerns? Would somebody like to make a motion?
We beat this up pretty good already, so um, I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
All right, I've got a motion from Gina. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second from Kyle. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we'll proceed with a roll call vote. Uh, Dan?
Aye.
Gina?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, that motion carries. All right, next up, we will move on to eleven point two, Orvis Pond Meadows rezoning request.
Um, at the last council meeting, it was asked to send this and have it reviewed by Planning Commission. Um, and Planning Commission reviewed it and have uh, some significant questions and are seeking the city's attorney and review and guidance to see whether the city can initiate this rezon request for the Orvis property as it's owned by the EDA. Uh, whether the EDA must, or whether the EDA must formally file that request. Um, any procedural steps required to correct or initiate rezoning consistent with the city code and legal standards. Um, and how the future land use map designation of the rural residential affects the potential for industrials of rezoning as it was discovered that um, or it was, we were informed that when the EDA did purchase this, that it was purchased for industrial. But I can't find minutes to support that. At any, I can't find anything on that. So I don't know the minutes are kind of sporadic and it just kind of happened.
So what you're doing is cleaning up um, unfinished.
Kind of, yes.
You're looking for permission for the attorney to to review this? I'll make that motion.
All right, I've got a motion from Kyle. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second from Gina. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, next up is eleven point three zoning code requests.
Um, so for about the last year, um, it's kind of been a process. We have gone through our zoning code and I have significant issues. Um, even our professional planners are, have suggested we need to review and actually redo our zoning code checker thirteen specifically. Um, it, a lot of it follows state law, but then it gives some gray areas. It makes it hard for development. Um, I've tried to get ordinance committee and planning commission to commit to something to try to do this as a collaborative and it's kind of been a a startle. Uh, the size of the committees, it just, with ordinance committee being so small, it's, it's very hard. So I'm asking for approval to have planning commission start this entire process, go through it and potentially just bring it to ordinance as and take up bigger chunks and bite out chunks with planning commission. Starting with some of these hot ones that need to be amended and amended now and I think.
Well, I guess the only question or thought that I had, um, I know we, at one point in time, we were trying to do the zoning work group to kind of make this process a little bit easier while ordinance being so small, that doesn't, didn't really work out. Um, could we be open to maybe inviting the folks from ordinance to be present at the planning commission meetings when these are being discussed? Just to get some input and get everybody familiar and on the same page?
Good idea.
I don't have an issue with that. I just, when it's been discussed, it, it, it just never seemed to work.
And it also, um, having, not having served on ordinance, but your agendas are full, you know, they're always full.
Apparently it's two counselors and two members of the public.
But I like that idea about move forward.
Go for short.
So you want, so you want chunks taken out with the planning and then what the planning moves through, they would assign it to ordinance or come back to council to assign it to?
Kind of what I'm feeling out, what, what would council, how would council like for this to go forward or if council even wants this to go forward or?
Like, I think we, personally, I think we need to look at our zoning because it's contradicts itself in some places and it's just needs a little bit of a refresh, so.
And what will be, your role be? Will you help bring things forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I, I guess I'm fine listening at the planning and inviting ordinance. I just have a problem with planning giving stuff to ordinance as an assignment since we seem to just went through that issue with other committees, so.
Mm-hmm. That, that's, I'm asking how council would like this done.
I think it was phrased that planning as eating the elephant. We have a lot to do, but we got to start somewhere, one small bite at a time.
Perfect. Uh, would someone like to make a motion, one way or the other, as to how to move forward with this?
I'll make the motion that we send it to the planning commission and we invite the ordinance committee so that they can be aware of all the information. But whatever the planning commission decides goes back through the council and the council can assign it out to ordinance committee at that point.
When it comes to zoning, you know, help them, we must definitely. We all second Kyle's motion.
All right, I've got a motion from Kyle and a second from Gina. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we are on to department reports. Did anybody have any questions, comments or concerns from the department reports?
Well, I just really hope my memory's not failing and I didn't have a liquor update or a Parkinson Rec meeting since the last report, so it looks like we're, you know. I don't know where Laura is. We didn't, we, we already reported right once. We haven't met again and then Brock. We haven't met yet. And then with Brock, we gave report last time, so we haven't met yet, so.
You're good.
Perfect. All right, uh, moving on to committee updates. Uh, we can start off with HRA. Uh, did you have any updates from HRA, Gina? I'm just trying to get my
No, we just, I think, I think um, the important thing was bringing that grant application forward. Um, that took up a lot of our time. Um, and you know, the main focus happening is just to um, strategize and hunt that foundation.
Get it fixed so we can follow through with um, how to request to move the, move the property onto a, a different entity.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was some discussion uh, with uh, or maybe this was just even uh, putting it on our radar, the rental assistance demonstration. Um, and that may be an avenue, correct me if I'm wrong, was it maybe an avenue that we can use to um, because our HRA is HUD funded, whereas the, for example, the county HRA is not HUD funded, kind of. It's not, they're not the same entity or same kind of entity, so we can't just say, here you go. At, to, before we can do anything, we must repair the problems with the building. And then we can transfer the property um, and move things down the road.
Right.
So out of curiosity, if that all can't be accomplished by the end of twenty twenty-six, and there's layers to that onion. If the attorney disagrees with it, then that decision to move forward with separating from HRA was also tied to their budget. So does that mean that they don't have a budget for twenty twenty-six?
I am unsure. I'm not of all legal background, so I don't know how, what would happen with those funds or how that would. Um, we can pass that on to the city attorney if you'd like to get some more clarification. I do know they are a sep- a separate levy entity, so I don't know how that plays into a, into our general fund budget, but.
They're, they set a separate levy, their funds.
But we had a, we had a vote on approving what they had said. So we're going to have to get some pretty close clarification, otherwise they might not have a budget in twenty twenty-six at all.
Um, the county does their levy though, so it's their fund. So they really don't take the city back because they're setting their own levy. City, it's not part of the city's levy.
Okay, so why would the city vote on it if the city doesn't have anything to do with it?
Because they're part of us. It's, it's all about.
But if the, if the vote didn't work, then they wouldn't have any money. I think we need clarification from the attorney.
Love my.
Yeah, can we dive in with the city attorney and get some more information on that, Marcy? Thank you. All right, uh, next we would move on to EDA here. Um, let's see, there wasn't a whole lot that I'm thinking we'd move some CDs around and kind of set up a plan for discussion as to what to do, how to ladder our funds, how to best manage our investments, I think is the uh, easiest way to say that. Um, and still making sure that we have funding available for those uh, in our RLA and things like that. Dan, do you have any other? Anything else to touch base on with EDA?
Uh, wait, just not really. We talked about rural business success series. Um, anything we can do to help support that?
The business networking lunch, that was, that was tomorrow.
Perfect. Um, next up, I have Planning Commission. Uh, planning was mainly discussing, uh, we had a public hearing for the Stransky rezon request, which we approved tonight. Um, conversations about the zoning work group, uh, which we resolved tonight. Um, questions about the Fond Meadows Orvis property, which we resolved, we're working through tonight. Um, and that's pretty much it, I think, from there, unless you have anything else to follow up on, Dan?
No, there was the small conversation about man swapping city and egg, but I think we put that one to sleep as well.
Yeah. Um, all right, and next up, we have Oops, Ordinance Review Committee. That was Monday. Um, and you think that I could remember what I talked about on Monday?
We talked about the uh, variance and appeals ordinance amendments. We talked about the conditional use permit ordinance, um, and the amendments, um, trying to come up with ways um, that are within legal confines for developers and property owners to potentially make um, changes to their variance and conditional use permits within a certain amount of time without having to go through the public hearing process, trying to be a little bit um, more cost effective, friendly and more uh, development friendly anywhere that we can. Um, we discussed the assessment policy. And we had a couple other um, cities presented with that, North Branch and Savage. And it led to a conversation about assessments, how we compare our assessment policy compares with others. And ultimately, what is going to be best for the city moving forward to be sustainable? Um, and one of the things that, topics that came up was, do we go to a hundred percent city funded, street repair and street reconstruction projects? Do we look at going to a tax throughout the whole entirety of the city to create a fund? Um, and that's kind of where we left that, just not knowing what, what uh, what council might, might say about that, but um, trying to come up with the best, most sustainable program moving forward to be able to do the things that we're going to need to do with our infrastructure and keep people in their, and businesses and homes.
Thanks, Dan. Um, all right, last on the list for committee updates is the Sandstone Hinckley Pine City Fire District meeting. I was out with a school.
Someone else was out and another person was out. I went, uh, the fire chief went. Um, it was a good discussion. Um, we were given assignments by city, so the three city administrators for the Hinckley Sandstone were getting together Monday to dive in though what it would look like if we were doing that, delegating responsibilities um, staff wise, like with um, admin. We're meeting Monday to discuss what they do administratively, what we do administratively and bear our notes and see how this would look if they were better.
Perfect. All right, any other committee update from members of council? Yes, Tom?
I apologize. I have one question for the council. Uh, with the change of the second council meeting for the month, we have conflict with the fire committee meeting. We had sent an email out, leave pile. Don't make me intervene as well. Do I need the council's permission to change that night because it was set for we, right now I've got like, for lack of better terms, a poll was sent out by the LAL at home. I'll just define out what night was worse and then we can get the announcement out for that with the package as soon as we can. Or can we just change the night like the?
I would think that would, it works best for the committee.
Yeah.
We can barely count our own.
I don't think there's any legal ramifications to changing that committee.
No, and I'm sorry that that caused conflict for the district.
Perfect, is that awesome? Thank you. All right, uh, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Uh, who wants to take a second? Motion from Gina, second from Dan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.